The information that sewer does on the consent agenda, that there should be, there should be more information for the board to consider, rather than just see it on the consent agenda and go yea or nay. So, this more project data items that you'll see later on.
There's not a lot of our current projects on here because these are, in fact, more global issues. My hope is that this goes way down and in the future, I hit the specific projects that are ongoing because frankly, between now and the end of this fiscal year, you will see a fair number of projects come out of this department for award. I know Steve loves to hear that when I say that because it just makes him happy. Well, I say, these are some of the major issues that are impacting us today. Some are more critical than others, but all of them have some type of impact on what we're doing, where we're going, and in many cases, how we get there. So, like I say, you know, I can go over these real briefly, one by one, or if you've had a chance to read it and you've got questions, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Obviously, for my standpoint, I just had one question, but I always let the commission go first. I don't need, I don't need the benefit of having you go through them because I'm aware of them. I do want to address one item, but after the commission goes first, if you'll have questions specifically.
I've always got questions. Bill, on number three?
Yes.
Since you finally got a little something there, help me out on the process. You've heard from the state on the 29th. You now, I assume, they have some things you need to do, and you get the new, you get a new thing to them by July 29?
Yes.
Then how long do we wait? How long are we supposed to wait?
Oh, okay. Basically, the way it's supposed to work, when we got comments back on our long-term control plan, we basically had 60 days to resubmit. We got 10 pages of comments. Couple of those comments are very significant comments. So, they have given us six months to respond to those comments. Frankly, we don't know if we're going to take the full six months or not. That's why we're trying to schedule a meeting with them. But, by the consent judgment, they're supposed to respond back within 60 days after receipt of our comments, which would put it at the end of August.
Will they?
No, into September.
Will they follow that?
Based upon past performance?
No.
I don't anticipate that.
Along with that, then, how would you characterize their, I know it's early, but how would you characterize their 10 pages of comments? Are they burdensome, overly burdensome, or just about right?
They, there's only two comments that give us a little bit of concern, and again, we just need a clarification from them.
So, it's too early?
They're basically dealing with some of the data that we collected as part of our model. If it's, if it's a worst-case scenario, it's very significant. If it's a best-case scenario, we're reading more into the, to the comment than's there, quite frankly. And we just don't know until we meet with them.
Thanks. Couple other things real quick. Have you, you know, I was, when you and I met, I was astonished, and I continue to be astonished, at the timeline on these things and how it doesn't go too quick, and that in a sense, you're having to do things without knowing for sure that that's exactly what you're supposed to do. Is that a correct statement?
The projects in the long-term control plan, we are very reluctant to undertake those, except in a couple of very unique instances, because we do not know how the Division of Water interprets our proceeding on those projects. There may be some issues that they would prefer us to do a little, and they're not going to tell us how to do our projects. It's more of how we look at the process to identify those projects and proceed with those projects. But, as you all know, there's a couple of projects that we've decided, even if, even if Division of Water says, no, we can't approve those as part of your long-term control plan, which I wouldn't anticipate, they are significant enough projects for us that we feel we need to go ahead and do it. One of those was Louisville Hill. And as I stated here, in September, when we had all that rain, the volume of water that went into my pump station down on Ewing Street was significantly reduced from what it had been in the past. I can't tell you exactly how much water went through that pipe. We're still trying to get a flow meter in there so that we can actually physically calculate that volume and say, you know, we removed X million gallons of water, but we don't have that number at this point. But, all I can say at this point is that volume that we saw at our station was significantly different based on the, on the volume of rain that we had back in December.
On the, so, what kind of, what's your ability to do future projections? In other words, if I asked you, what are we going to need, how much revenue do we need for the next three or four years, and what are our expenses going to be? Is that a possible number?
It's, it's, it's what we like to call a swag. A swag is a scientific wild-ass guess.
I had a feeling that's what you were going to say.
Now, that's better than a wag, because it's scientific.
Gotcha.
But, but we know pretty much what we want to do, and basically, we've got this, this group of projects, and essentially, what we do is every year, we just move them out a year. So, we just push them a year forward until that, that trigger hits, and then we start executing them. But, again, when we negotiated our consent judgment, our whole, our intent the whole time, we requested the, or negotiated the 15 years. The purpose for that was we wanted to spend the first eight, which is in our consent judgment, to address our sanitary sewer overflows. Then, we were going to focus on the combined sewers for the remainder of the last seven years. The Division of Water, just by the delay in reviews and approvals, is accomplishing that for us. We really had not expected to expend huge expenditures in the first eight years on combined sewer projects. So, in that perspective, it really hasn't impacted us significantly. I say, there's a couple of projects that we've gone ahead and decided to go ahead and pull the trigger on, just because it seemed like the right thing to do from a, from a reduction in flow to the plant, as well as, as energy conservation. It just made sense to do them. Does that answer your question?
Well, so, what I guess my concern is, and I don't know that you can answer, but my concern is, is that it seems to me, we don't have a very good mechanism to know what future costs are going to be, or as good a mechanism as I would like, when you're, when you're looking at whether or not to do rate increases, whether or not to bond, and how much to bond, and how much to do rate increases, and it, you know, it makes me a little nervous.
Well, and a perfect example was, what was it, 2010? Yeah, 2010, we had a rate increase scheduled, January, and that was deferred, because we didn't need the money at that time. In January of '12, we had a second increase that was, that was programmed. That one was, was split in two and deferred for, one for two years and one for four, four years. That first one's coming up, January of 2014. Steve and I have already talked about it, probably late summer, fall, we'll sit down, take a look at it. Frankly, at this point, again, based upon projections that I'm seeing, and the fact that, that we're not, you know, undertaking some of these projects, I'm, I'm going to go out on a little bit of a limb here and say, there is a small chance that we may not need that rate increase. But, I'm, you know, I gotta wait and see how the rest of this year goes and what my budget next year looks like, before I can definitively say that.
Last question. I'm sorry. The hiring somebody that's been vacant since December 2006?
Yes.
Well, you know, I've got the obvious question. If we, if we've made it since December 2006, can't we make it without ever having it?
I am tired of working 60-hour weeks. Pure and simple. Basically, we took that position, we took all the duties, we divided a bunch, a bunch of folks. We need to get those duties back to the individual and proceed, because I'm spending way too much of my time dealing with issues that frankly, I shouldn't have to deal with. Bottom line. Plus the fact, I will also state, if you all remember, when we had our goals and objectives meeting, one of the positions that I mentioned we needed was our health and safety individual. I've looked at that, and I think, at least for short term, we can use this position to delay that need for some period of time. I can't say how long. But, bottom line, I'm not getting some of the things done that I need to get done, because I'm doing other things that, that this position should be doing.
A lot of that is individual project management.
Yes, I'm managing way too many projects. I mean, a simple thing, I, I used to put out an annual report every year to the commission. I haven't done that in four years. I just haven't had time. Pure and simple. I just haven't had time.
Is it possible for combining the duties you just, you just mentioned, you said a deputy and one other person that you really needed?
Safety. Health and safety. Well, I say, I think we can use that position to, to bridge a gap. I, I still think with the, with the type of work we do and the number of people that we have in the field, I really need a full-time health and safety person, but I would be happy to defer that for a year or two, and let this person at least start to build on that program. Because again, frankly, right now, I think we have a decent program, but, but there's a lot of things we're not doing that we should do. And again, it's a matter of time and availability.
Any others? Okay. I just had one question. I know we've talked about it before, but, and I know it said, before warm weather starts the over-control issue for Indian Hills and Thornhill areas?
Yes.
Just, and rather than take staff, I mean, what I'll do is, I'll just, you can give me an update on that later.
Okay. Certainly. But, yeah, we are, we are working towards-
If it's interesting, copy the board.
Which number is that?
Number two.
We're, we're working towards a temporary solution. It's not permanent. We, we, it's going to take a lot more time to come up with a permanent, but, but I think we can come up with a temporary solution to, to solve the problem on short term.
Okay. And just copy the board on it if they, since they can make it, in case you all get phone calls.
And I will say, just one, one more thing in closing. We're doing some, some, some very unique things within the department. We are getting recognition. Since November of, of 2012, I've been invited to three separate conferences to make presentations. People have heard some of the things we're doing, and I think that's great. I mean, we're, we're making some good things, we're doing some things, and the general wastewater population is, is impressed with some of the things we're doing. So, I think that's a, a very positive for the city of Frankfurt.
As always, thank you, and don't let any nematodes escape.
Absolutely.
They're dangerous. I'm just kidding.
Quick question. I mean, for future months, is this, does this work for you all?
That works for me, yes.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, city manager search update. I think Randy Donahue will come forward on that. Eli's coming forward. Is there any, since we're going to have, evidently, we'll have a new city manager in, in place soon, the commission goals and priorities, since that's going, does it make more sense to wait until the new city manager comes in on that?
I don't think, I think it would be nice to go ahead and look at this, lay out a roadmap, so we have certain topics we know we want to discuss for at least the next couple of months.
And I think-
I was just asked by-
Yeah. And Mayor, I think on some of them, the people need to go ahead and start, I think on a few things.
Sorry. Go ahead, Randy. I'm sorry, I was just, I was taking-
Just briefly, or whatever, somebody's come by my office today. Mr. Zizov did return the contract that was offered to him, signed around mid-morning today, so I guess the commission needs to determine what the next step is, or maybe Mr. Moore can advise you in that regard.
Randy and I discussed the, the fact that we can either, the city commission can either schedule a special meeting to authorize Mayor May to sign the contract, or wait until the voting meeting later this month, whichever your wishes are.
I think since, since he's projected to begin March 12, that we probably ought to do a special meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And at least allow him the confirmation as well.
What time is it right now? Seven? So, as long as I can call one of them, it's 7:30.
What?
I was trying to think in my head. I could do what? We could call a special meeting for tomorrow night at 7:30 and do it that quickly? Or, we can do it during, if you want to do it tomorrow night, we can, we can, right now, we can call a special meeting and have it for 7:30 and still make the-
I would appreciate it if you're going to do that, if you would make it 7:45.
We could still do that, right? But, I don't, I don't know if y'all want to do it.
Sure.
I'm saying that means, that meets the minimum requirements by the statute, if you want to do it that quickly, or if you want to wait and do it on Wednesday?
I think when I talk with the-
We only need a small, all we need is a majority to be here for a meeting.
Not Wednesday. Not tomorrow night. I could be here Wednesday. I could be here Thursday. Be here Thursday.
So, Wednesday's the only night you cannot do. I believe we should all be here if we can't, I mean, maybe for nights we can't do.
You cannot do Wednesday, but you can do tomorrow. You can do Tuesday or Thursday. So, I would, can I, well, I can't make a motion, we're not voting, but why don't we try tomorrow night at seven? Can we do it 7:40 or 7:45?
Sure. Because if we're going to do it, it'll be done. It's up to you all.
Is that okay with everyone?
I, I have no idea. I'd do the best that I can.
Oh, well, maybe, let's wait till-
I can do Wednesday.
Would it make more sense to call a special meeting at lunchtime, so that staff's already here and nobody has to come back?
We have to have 24-hour votes.
I was just giving y'all the earliest we can do it. That's all, I was just saying, hey, the earliest we can do it is-
Well, Wednesday at lunchtime would be good, right? Commissioner Roach?
Except that I've got, like, three meetings that I've covered between 12 and 1. But, I've been 2:12 and 2:00.
Did you do that on Thursday as well?
I can do it at 2:00.
Now, Ramona was free on Thursday. She said if we had a special meeting.
I can do a Wednesday at 2:00.
Oh, and each 3:00.
2:00 and 3:00.
I can do Wednesday at 2:00.
Can we do Wednesday, too?
No, I've got-
No, you have-
We can do it later Wednesday.
I can do Wednesday morning. I go into work at 1 o'clock on Wednesdays.
Commissioner Roach, when could you, like, do tomorrow? I mean, how, like-
Well, the earliest we could do it would be at night, we got 24 hours.
I know, but he's saying, maybe he could be ready here.
I really haven't done my list, not that it's that big of a deal, but I really don't know what I'm doing tomorrow, to be honest with you.
Oh, okay.
That's why I said I'd do the best that I can. I'd say it's 90-something percent chance I'll be here.
I could be here tomorrow, it's just, I just thought it'd make more sense, so the staff doesn't have to come back.
We only need two people to do it.
But, I think we should all-
I said staff-wise.
Oh. Mayor, is it, is your 12 to 1 every day, like?
No, it's on Wednesday.
What could we do Thursday?
We have to testify with the clients. Sorry. Thursday, Matt. But, um-
Well, I'll get in here tomorrow night, just put her on there.
Friday, we can do it Friday, if you want to. Wednesday or Friday?
We can't do Wednesday morning anytime? Anybody? Bueller? Bueller?
I'm good, I'm good for Wednesday morning.
That's fine, I'll make it work.
I think we'll-
Wednesday is the one day of the week while the session's going on that-
That you couldn't come in at 8:00 in the morning?
It's like they start at 8:00 o'clock. They go 8 to 2, committee meetings.
Uh-huh. It's going to take five minutes.
About Wednesday 3:00. I thought you were starting.
I don't have to be here. If you want to go ahead and do it, I can call the meeting for 8:00 o'clock on Wednesday. You don't have anything else, then we vote it and assign it. Because I don't, I don't feel like I have to be here if, if you want to. If that's when we can get three together.
Let's just do the first idea, which was tomorrow night, which looked like we had more people, could do that and anything else.
Right. Can you do 8:00?
I won't be here, but I'm okay.
Do you keep it in the morning?
It wasn't Wednesday, it was Tuesday that was the problem.
We don't know whether the city clerk will be available, and Alex is not available tomorrow night at 7:30.
Well, that's fine, because Commissioner Hayes just realized it was tomorrow night, he could not do, but Wednesday he can, so can we go set it for Wednesday?
Well, we do it on the 14th. That's Valentine's Day, we can have a nice meeting, invite the wives.
I don't care. I don't care. I just wanted none.
You can do Wednesday.
My wife'd be used to it.
You gotta get done with work.
Well, if we're not going to do it tomorrow, then we don't have to make it to-
Commissioner Roach, you can do Wednesday night, correct?
No.
Oh.
I do, I can do late, I can do 8:30, or I can do 6:00, or-
Wednesday night?
I can do, it's only going to take five minutes, so-
Wednesday, Thursday, I thought we was trying to keep staff, them have to come, they don't have to come back.
We don't need staff to come back. All we need is the board.
We need some staff to come back.
Well, all we require is to have one person to keep minutes.
I can keep the minutes.
I can keep the minutes.
I mean, we've done it like that, literally. I can, I can ask Rob to keep the minutes.
He's good at it.
What time can everybody do on Wednesday? I can do anytime until 3:00 on Wednesday.
2 to 5.
I'm good all day after 2:00. I'll even come down at midnight if you want to.
It's all right, I don't have to be here, you got 3:00, that's fine, do it.
No, 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 I don't-
We can come later.
If we're not going to do it tomorrow, then we can, we can, I'll just, you let me know, and I'll call the meeting for whenever the most of the folks can get here.
Mayor, I think we can all do 8:00 on Wednesday.
8:00 Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. or 8:00 p.m.?
P.m.
I can do it.
I'll get here.
8:00 p.m. Wednesday.
I bet you're sure it's, but I'll get here.
Thank you.
Bring my kids with me. My kids go to bed at 7:30.
Oh, good. Okay.
That'd be a special night for them.
So, city manager, we'll have a special meeting on Wednesday at 8:00 p.m. in the conference room.
Wednesday, 8:00 p.m. Correct?
Yes.
Well, that's, that was our longest decision.
It's all right.
Might be the longest, maybe, no.
All right. Mayor, is it accurate just to have the call to approve the city manager contract?
That's all we'll put on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right. Commission goals and priorities. We have copies. So, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Yes, that's what he said.
I was going to ask a question. We have, we have some goals on here that is, like, now to the first three months. Are those the ones we should consider first, or you just want to start at the top and plow through it?
Y'all's discretion.
What did you say?
You want to start from the top and just plow through it, or hit the ones that got three to six months, the ones that are coming up on us?
I just think, I think the ones that have months, the ones that are now and ongoing to be, that's my opinion, that we just talk about the ones that have months next to them.
Okay. You say every month?
The ones that are coming up quickly. Is that what you're saying, too?
Okay. And the first one that has months would be cut energy costs?
I think there's only one problem with the not plowing. I think some of the not plows may be over a broad enough timeframe, but some of it may need to start fairly soon. That's the only-
Understood.
-concern that I would have.
Understood.
We can just go straight through it, and plus, you might want to change some of those if the-
Well, it also looks like we've already discussed trying to talk about trash and not see trash.
Well, so, city beautification is the last thing, and that's what I thought on the agenda, and you said brief at, at the next work session, the very last thing.
Garbage tweaks is under community. Commissioner?
Thank you. That's for the next month. Well, I mean, but we said we're going to do it for March, so.
Which month?
Well, the garbage issue, any tweaking we're going to have on the agenda for March.
Okay. We'll just go down the list quickly, how about that?
Yes.
And we'll just do what we can. Number one is to reduce, the budget in terms of personnel cost, try to decrease that. We put that over a four-year goal, and we heard from our finance director earlier about the impacts that reducing staff has or doesn't have compared to any other changes with the budget. So, that's going to be a little trickier, maybe, than we thought.
I think-
Is there something with that new structuring of part-time employees? Is there something about that that would help us in this conversation? Steve?
Part-time and seasonal labor cost is really insignificant compared to full-time labor.
Okay. So, there's nothing in that that would help us with this?
I don't think significant, but no.
I think on this first one, we've seen from Steve's presentation, that perhaps, trying to lower personnel costs from, let's say, 71% to 65% may be too, too severe, based on what the numbers that he was coming up with. So, I suspect that we need to raise what our goal is. But, if he's not in here, but I, I think that's the, you know, from what he was, from what he was up there showing, it looked like if you take it down a couple of points, you save quite a bit over a long period of time. So, you know, I would, I would suggest that we'd look, maybe look at 68% instead of 65%.
Well, I think since it's a four-year goal, I'm not really sure, when he just did those numbers, it was going to take quite a while to really make an impact on there. So, I think it's good to stay on here, but I think that's one of our long-range goals. So, I really don't know if it's going to do us a lot of good to have that early.
Maybe we need somebody to point with the toggle button down there while we do that.
No, that's okay, we're not going to be able to-
I agree with you. That makes sense.
Okay. So, we'll just, we'll leave that on the list, and we just have to do further analysis. And then, limit and defer equipment purchases to one and a half to $2 million. And I think you've heard the finance director also plugged some of those numbers in, that the, that cost is going to be something that we're not going to really know until we get more input from department heads, and it says unknown, need more information, so.
Well, I think with that presentation he just gave, we can play with this now.
So, we're going to have to get some input from departments on, on that.
I guess my, you're right, Mayor. I think, I guess my question would be, do we need to, at what point in time does the commission need to maybe give Steve and the department heads some sort of a broad sense of what we're looking at? I realize they're going to have input, obviously, on what their needs are, but we know 600,000 doesn't work. We also know that we can't spend $2 or $3 million. So, what is, what ours is a, you know, sort of a general number, based on looking at that analysis of what we can do?
Well, what you don't have is what the departments say they need, which would be in the budget process.
Yes, sir.
And now, you know, however you want to do it, if you want to come out and just have a bright-line number that you will not spend more than $1 million in equipment, or you will not have over, you know, so many million dollars in personnel costs, and the board could do that, and then we'd have to figure a budget that way, but you don't know what each department needs yet. So, hopefully, the budget process would, would let you know that, then you could, you could tailor, tailor that for that, like, you know, this is too much this way, too much that way.
Commissioner?
I just, I guess for Mr. Dawson, or actually, for the whole board, would it not just be
simpler to give each department a directive that they are going to cut their budget that we're going to be looking at this spring, X percent from what it was last budget cycle? Would that not be an easier way to look at this rather than look at...
I don't think they can cut anymore than they've already been cutting.
Well, we're talking about cutting on expenditures for equipment. We're talking, we are talking about cuts. And so, the equipment for one department, there may be some cuts that can be made in one department, but not in another. In other words, departments are different and have different needs, and when the budget comes to us, I think those kind of decisions really need to be made by department heads because they're working in it every day, rather than by us giving those specific directives that ask each department to do what they can within the department, to cut by whatever the factor is that we think it needs to be cut to reach our target budget. Is that...
I think instead of looking at cuts, we look at collaboration.
Well, I'm just saying that I don't think this board is in any sort of situation to know what realistically can be done within those departments, but those department heads aren't. And so, if we could give them a general sort of directive, we would like to see what you can do within your department to cut by whatever it is, 3%, 5%, whatever it is that we think is feasible, what you can do, what you can do through looking at what you are doing right now. But some departments may not be able to do as much as other departments in terms of when you present the budget. The budget's coming out, and well, we'll be looking at it in three or four months, maybe two or three months, maybe three months. But I think we need a general directive across the city which allows the department heads to make the specific recommendations, what's going to happen, because it's different in different departments, just like with the structured payment that you were talking about earlier. One of my questions was, should we not be looking at combining some of the responsibilities of some of those part-time people? Well, I don't know that department, the Parks Department knows that. So, I just think those specific things need to come to us from within the departments, which they do every year with the budget. But I think this commission's responsibility or job is to tell you all generally what we want to see, and then you specifically bring back to us what you can do with that factor. So, that's what I'm recommending that we do.
Commissioner, that makes a lot of, I mean, good points. One thing I would just say, though, for example, a small department cannot maybe sustain any cuts if they've had equipment purchases deferred over the past couple of budget cycles. And I know we have some situations to where...
And I agree with you on that. There are some departments that...
So, we're going to have to look at each department individually. I don't think that we can put out cuts.
They're not going to be able to do that. But there, again, I don't think we, the commissioners, are really in a position to know what they can cut or cannot cut, because they're in it every single day.
Correct.
So, that if we just ask them to target a certain factor, and maybe the city manager can give us some guidance on what those factors should be for each department.
Well, I wanted to point out to you that it's the city manager's responsibility to present this board with a budget, and then it would be the board's responsibility to go back to the city manager and give him the parameters of what the budget would have to be. So, the departments would request to the city manager what they feel that they need to operate in the year, and then the city manager will either trim it or whatever and present it to the board, then the board can come back and say, "I don't like the balance of the numbers, take it back and play with it, do something." Run Dawson's doomsday machine on it or whatever. I've been saving that one for a while, I'm sorry. But ultimately, you know, the city manager presents that budget to you, and I think each of the individual department heads has a pretty good idea of what this board is looking for. I don't think you're going to get a pie in the sky, I need, you know, 10 extra people in this budget, and, you know, all new offices and new carpeting type thing, so...
Real quick, you know, I was just thinking in terms of some broad parameters, but I'm fine with what you all are saying. I do think we need to, just one clarification from Commissioner Bowers is the equipment costs, obviously, we cannot continue at 600,000, so that's actually a line that's going to go up. Now, is it going to go up to 1 million, or 1.3, or 1.4, or 1.6? I really don't know, because I depend on you all. And then we look and see what those... We're going to have to look and see after this, I guess if we're going to do it that way, we'll look and see where the process takes us, then input the data in something similar to what Steve's done, or if he doesn't update it one, and then we'll know. You'll know when you vote in two years whether or not you're going to vote for a tax increase or strong cuts, or you'll know in four years if all things being equal, things are going to be good.
Yes, but I did not, let me clear the record for you. I didn't make the suggestion for equipment cutbacks. That was actually made in the planning session by someone else, and I asked the question, would that not create some liability? So, my point there was, we, the commissioners, really are not in the position to determine cutbacks on equipment. That is up to the department heads, because those people know what shape their equipment's in, and they know much better than I do or any of us do. So, really, I think the employees that we hire, our department heads, know what they're doing, and they're dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. As I look back there, most of them have been here for a very long time, and if they know what we're trying to achieve, because they're looking at the same thing we're looking at, then I think they can be called upon to recommend those things to us. And then if we still think we need to cut back more, or we need to, whatever, raise taxes, that's fine, but I think they've got to come to us with the plan. And I think for this body to try to come up with that plan now is way too premature. I think that that needs to come to us, and that needs to be dealt with in the budget. But I think this city commission wants to move us in the direction that Steve Dawson wants to move us in, and so I think that the work's going to have to come there, and it's going to have to come to us. And I don't think that we can really direct that specifically, that's all I'm saying. But no, I did not make the recommendation that equipment be cut. That didn't come out of my mouth over there. I simply asked a question, because somebody said that it needs to happen, won't that create some liability? So, we're not in a position to know that. So, I just wanted to clarify that for you. All right.
Well, so then we'll have to get some more budget information from the department heads, so...
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Mark kind of alluded to this, but you know the way our system's set up right now? When we get through the month of February, everybody's, we've already kind of put the salaries into the system, and then right now, all the managers are putting all their overhead costs into the system. So, we're going to have a preliminary number for everybody to look at at the end of February. And then that's going to kind of give you some guidance on what you might think, you know, the percentage of reduction, we need to reduce, come back and reduce that. So, you're going to see that number, and you'll see...
End of February.
End of February, you're going to see like, I don't know if you remember the summary sheet, Commissioner Bowers, that you used to get, that had like, each department, it had like salaries, benefits, materials, equipment, and the total cost, and then we can look down and see where we are in total, and then we can try to make cuts from there, whatever we need to do from there. So, I think you're going to have enough information to be able to make some kind of a judgment call at the end of February. But like Mark said, we're going to go back, you know, the city manager's going to go back after that point. We've got scheduled meetings with all the employees, with all the managers, and so we're going to go through their budgets, and then we'll be talking more specifically about what we can, you know, we can trim at that, you know, at that point, and that's what I think, I'm not putting words in your mouth.
No, you're correct. In fact, I believe our first meeting is March 13th with planning and zoning, so... So, introduce Mr. Zizov to the budget process.
Yeah.
Frankfurt style.
Yeah. So, that's just kind of how, you know, it's laid out right now, but, you know, you'll have a, you can look at a, take a bird's eye view down at it at that point and say, maybe get some suggestions or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think that what I'm hearing is, I think all of the department heads are really on the same page with what we want to do, and so I think that that's where those specifics need to come originate.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, it's okay. And then with the next item, most of these are going to be, depend on the budget, offset cost increases with budget cuts, and we saw the model tonight, structurally balanced budget. We know that the city manager, whoever, I was trying to say whoever that is, we already know now, that they're required by statute to do that. And then we don't want taking big chunks of our reserve account to balance the budget. So, we emphasize that's going to be, and Steve knows that, and you know...
But Mayor, I don't think we, we've gone a couple of years with not really having one structurally balanced, so I think we're heading that way again.
So, but the staff understands we are saying, don't take money out of the reserves to balance the budget. That's where we're starting from anyway. Although, though, as Mark said, the city manager is required by statute to present us a budget, and then after that, we can, you can rubber stamp it, you can make changes, or you can completely rewrite everything. So, that's going to be up to us to hold the line on that if we can. I mean, there may be some circumstances that'll come up that we have no choice, that we are looking at right now, and that does happen from time to time. And then, speaking of surplus, what percentage of our operational budget would we like to be in surplus and have a four-year goal over that? So, that's going to be coming up in the budget process. Energy costs, we want our department heads to always be looking at that, but the board's emphasizing that over the next three to six months, we want to see what types of programs each department can put into place to significantly make reductions, and we can measure that through our utility information that goes through finance. I believe most of that will come through finance.
Utility costs.
That's why we hired a department to come in. Yes.
Go ahead. I think that was...
Were you talking about having a consultant, an energy consultant?
I think that was where we were going to have some, a private sector company or two come in and give us a proposal on doing that.
So, we want, we would direct...
I'm not really sure.
And make them under, I mean, the new city manager, maybe something, I mean, I don't know if you can in two weeks' period or three weeks' period, work on something like that with everything else facing...
Well, we can get the ball rolling, but I've still got to get a budget together for the police department, too.
That's what I was saying, I don't know what kind of pressure it's going to put on.
I think the new guy would really like a lot of these things.
Well, that's why we were asking the question beforehand, since we're going to have a new, a transition, the new manager may look at some of these items based on meeting with department heads and say that some of these may not be doable in that period. And that was the only question we had when we started, said, should we just wait at this point, let the new city manager take over on Mark's...
I think many of these items that are common sense, some of these things are already done. You know, you were looking about the making payments online. That's taken care of. You know, you can mark that off the list, you know, that's taken care of. Improved signage, that's, you know, we can work on that, or that's a little longer term. You know, some of these things, even if you kick them off today, the new city manager would certainly want to have some input and some guidance, and perhaps has some experience in dealing with some of these issues. That, you know, if I kicked something off, then he would come in and maybe want to go in a different direction than what I've started.
That's our reason we were asking. We didn't want to change your priorities for talking about tonight, so...
Right. Now, like on the back page, the garbage tweaks, you know, that's something that the board should discuss, because we're going to have some capital outlays if, otherwise, and unless there's some sort of change that structural change to the plan, then we're going to have to, going to have to purchase more cans, so...
We're going to turn any suggestions that we have for tweaks to you, and so that at our next work session in March, we'll decide where we want to go with that, right? So, is it better to...
Not, maybe we might not decide, but at least we might have a clear understanding of what direction the board may be leaning in. So, that was the reason we were asking from a perspective of where Mark is and where the new city manager will be coming in, in terms of Mark doing work that may get undone by the next, I wouldn't say undone, but...
But may go in a different direction.
Go in a different direction, is what I probably meant to say. Commissioner Hines?
I think with some of these goals, though, it seemed like there was a majority of the commission that wanted to speak about improving business opportunities. And I think it sets precedent to go ahead and try to discuss that before we get too far gone in this commission, that we go ahead and set that up and at least look at code enforcement, look at the architecture review board, just set up a discussion where we're going to discuss this, and we're going to look at either changing ordinances or not changing ordinances. And as a commission, we need to discuss that and let the public know. I think we need to do that sooner than later.
Well, one of the points, too, is because we've got the budget coming up, we'll probably not ask the city manager and Steve Dawson about this. If we get something, I mean, anything that goes past, April's going to get deeply into the budget.
Right, so...
So, if you want to do it in March or April...
Yes.
We should probably go ahead and...
I think it's wise for this commission to go out and try to do that, because it's going to take two readings if we're going to change ordinances. We need to do it if that's the idea and that's the route we want to go, like we all campaigned on it.
Otherwise, you're going to get, we're going to get bogged in the budget, and it's going to be June.
And then it's September.
And then you get better, yeah. So, if you want it on for March, and if it's not ready, we just pass over it, but put it on for March.
I'm kind of putting it on for, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm just...
Do it away.
I would like to discuss these items in March as a commission, at a work session. All of us review the ordinances ourselves, speak with the interim city manager while we have them, and the new manager when we get in, and...
The March work session is the day before Mr. Zizov comes on.
Well, maybe he could just come sit in on that.
You have his contract.
Let's chime with that.
I'll be happy to contribute whatever I can to getting the ball rolling on some of these things, particularly if you're talking about ordinances. The board would have some recommendations, I'm sure, that we could follow up on.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowers was next. I'm sorry. It's my fault.
I guess, Mr. Mueller, do you remember, we had a citizen, a committee composed of citizens to examine that code before? I guess they have disbanded, I guess, or they still? I'm wondering if we should, because we're talking about, I think, my understanding of the planning session is we want to make that code less complicated, more succinct, more have just code that we can enforce rather than things we, so much code that we can't enforce it, is that, is that just of what we had determined? And if so, would it not be a good idea to convene that committee again, or have they just completely gone away?
There was a Code Enforcement Task Force committee created, '03, '04.
Yes.
It was specific, time-oriented, and they had a termination date, so they no longer exist.
Would that be a good idea, to do that again? Because I know they worked, they had many, many meetings and worked very, very hard on that, and I believe that if this commission attempted to do that, we're going to need more than a couple of work sessions. Do you think it would be a good idea to appoint another task force to look at that code? I think we wanting to make it, what's the word I'm looking for? Your items in that code, is that what we're looking to do? From your perspective, what do you think we need to do?
I have this printed out, and that's the only information I've been given. So, and I wasn't in your meetings. But from what I read and understand, and conversations with a couple of you on and on, there's the property maintenance code. That's one separate animal. You've got the architecture review board and Article 17, and that's a zoning regulation. All everything that it does goes through the architecture review board, and the planning commission actually creates the text that comes before you all, and they have a zoning committee. So, there's three agencies involved in that task. And then you have the actual just city ordinances that deals with businesses and regulations and permits, business licenses. I think it's wonderful and great to have a committee. I wouldn't want to have it death by committee, because I've seen that happen. We have one now floating around, in my opinion. But, so yes, public input is very important. I kind of need to know a little more what it is. I have some thoughts and suggestions. I think Mr. Moore and Rebecca has some. On some of these, I definitely think we have some input, but I would need more direction on what it is you're wanting before I can really advise you one way or another. I'm all for committees and meeting. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Or, you know, if you just have suggestions, because you deal with it every day, that you think needs to be changed, that might be the more efficient way to deal with it. I know they worked really hard for a long time.
I sure did.
But if you know what needs to change in there, maybe you would just give that to us. I see, the city solicitor.
I was involved in that task force back in '04, and I, I think that was a six or nine-month process.
Two, it took a year and a half before we actually adopted anything. It was, but they meant monthly.
It, it took a long time. And the committee did come out with some, I think, common sense suggestions in an attempt to make the code more user-friendly. I don't recall whether all of their recommendations were adopted.
No, they weren't. Not all of them.
And then I would also note that the, the property maintenance code is generally based upon an international property maintenance code. And so that's where a lot of the provisions come from. And of course, the, that is a document that has been reviewed by any number of eyes. And they do try and make it as commonsensical as, as possible, but it's still difficult to, to work your way through.
That's correct. And the property maintenance code is the minimum standard of life, the minimum standard of maintenance. What I'm hearing is we want to remove some of those.
I don't know.
This is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
I think there's a problem with enforcement of what we have.
Which?
Does exist.
I'd be happy to talk to you all about that.
Okay.
Any others on that one?
So we'll talk about that in March. That's trash.
So it'll be on the agenda. And of course, and if it's not ready to be presented, we can think about, but this, at least the rec staff will give them a heads up that the commission wants it on the agenda for March.
And he, he needs more direction.
Property maintenance code, we have the abandoned ordinance, urban, abandoned urban property ordinance, which is not a property maintenance code issue, but y'all are mentioning that twice in here. And then you have the zoning issue of architecture review board and this general business friendly and how we can streamline things. That's, that's a couple of nights all by itself, in my opinion.
Right. And I will say that that abandoned urban property ordinance has been effective in getting the attention of the people that are having to pay the triple tax. Perhaps more effective than the property maintenance code in some circumstances.
So is that acceptable to everyone?
I'll bring you what I can bring. Not a problem at all.
It'll be a long work session then, I think?
I'll schedule it last, so the other department heads can go home.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you all want to then wait till the new city manager will do this? Would he?
I think anything that has a budgetary impact, we might as well wait, because we're going to get input during that time. So that would give us that time to go back and forth. And the things that don't have an impact that we can actually go and start, because I look, I'm looking at it now before Will Hart leaves and after Will Hart leaves. He's made some calls there, because there are some things that we need to be doing right now. Our agenda is already, seems like it's packed. We know that the next voting meeting already has a lot of items on it. And we need to make sure we have, you know, we have a strong work session in March. It sounds like that's good. So it's, actually, the other ones, and then we go into the budget thing, seems like the March, and that's when we have that input going back and forth. And I think we're going to already start doing the review on the ordinances, which kind of ties into some of the discussion we just had. And I think Randy has said that he can do that staffing head count monthly with notes, new hires, retirement, which helps us move, plug in these numbers when we get to that part. I, I went through, and I didn't see a lot of things that we had to do. Not really sure what we were doing about the assess, on the operational, assess city real estate holdings and evaluate future needs. But we said three to six months on that. But I think when we look at those properties, and when we talk about business friendly, that's something we all have to do. I mean, that's, that's something that has to happen. That's the only way it's going to. But I'm looking at for tonight, and I really didn't see anything that had to change. We, we might have to look, either wait. Some of these might change. Maybe it don't have to happen in three to six months. You know, that might be the delay. But I can't speak for the whole board. I'm, I'm just thinking that, I, I thought we was kind of looking to see what we can do the first three months. And we know the budget's part of that, and the rest of the stuff's going to automatically be kind of pushed off. But we need to not delay on some of these things that we've addressed tonight.
Right. We've got two months going.
Right.
And if there's a particular item that members feel really strongly about, just make sure we just get those on the agenda. And then, and if it doesn't get on the agenda for whatever reason, if you can get another two members during the work, I mean, during a regular meeting, just make a motion to add to the agenda. And, because it's going to pass anyway, so just make sense. Go on and do it. All right. So then, next item would be, staff has asked, informed that we need to go into a closed session pursuant to KRS 61810 subsection 1, subsection C for litigation.
I have one thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I spoke too early about it.
That's all right. I'm, I'm recordashing.
I understand that some emails have been put out, but just for public record, the sirens, can you give an update on sirens, that they're working now?
The sirens are back in operation.
Okay. Did we figure out what happened? Was it the bound function?
Radio interference, basically. That, that set off two particular sirens that apparently didn't trigger any of the other ones. So we think we have the problem under control.
Been tested and working, or?
As far as I know, they're working. That's, that's the best I can tell you. I haven't heard them myself.
I haven't heard either, but.
I did get an email, but you didn't.
I did. It's just for public record.
Okay.
But I, I'm sure Emergency Management Director Rambo will set them off probably during a storm readiness time. They have several throughout the year. And we'll, we'll give public announcement and test the signs.
Good.
First one, do you want, noon? Okay, is there any?
That's it.
And I, I didn't miss, because we still haven't. Is there any new business? Okay. And then I was going to say, the staff mentioned that we needed to, to add a closed session, KRS 64. I'll read it again. Closed session pursuant to KRS 61810 sub 1, sub C for litigation, pending litigation, and sub F for personnel.
Move that, do that, your worship.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to recognize it. I'm moving with Joe in this. Move back, Commissioner Bowers, second back, Commissioner Roach. Please color over.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. We'll just go across the hall.